Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 20th, uh, April 20th City Council Meeting. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Seeing none, Vice President Walsh, would you please lead us in salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zerella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Here virtually.
Counselor Fleming.
Here virtually.
Counselor Green.
Here virtually.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here remotely.
Counselor Squallia.
Right.
Counselor Van Hesinga.
Here.
And Counselor Walsh.
The public has been advised to contact the Clerk's office by noon today regarding comments of no more than two minutes. We have Ms. Danielle Fletcher joining us with no comment for educational purposes. Welcome, Ms. Fletcher. And we have a number of city officials who will speak at the appropriate point in the agenda unless they wish to speak beforehand. We have a report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, Senator. We're leading the Pittsburgh Appointments Committee, we're held on April 20th of 2021 at the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, and called to order by, at 6:45, we took up two appointments. One was the appointment of Mr. Derek Cruz to the Pittsburgh Cultural Council, term to expire April 1st of 2024, which was accepted, and as well as a full-time student police officer for the City of Pittsburgh, Mr. Angelo J. Ramos Jr., which was also accepted.
Make a motion if you accept.
Okay.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, the report is approved and the appointments are made. And Madam Clerk will swear in the new student police officer, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge, sorry.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a full-time student police officer.
As a full-time student police officer.
For the City of Pittsburgh Police Department.
For the City of Pittsburgh Police Department.
To help you out.
So, um, yeah.
Congratulations, sir.
Nice. (applause). Counselors, thank you very much for finding it's time to get back to something normalcy. I told him not to go around shaking hands this evening, as we would typically do with our new candidates. But on behalf of the Pittsburgh Police Department, thank you for this confirmation, and we look forward to Mr. Ramos joining our police department as soon as he's done his training. So, once again, Counselors, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We will now hear a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
At this time, our records appear to be in order. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
If there is no objection, we will take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, the report is approved. We have communications, two appointment letters or reappointment letters from His Honor, the Mayor. Mr. Richard Libertory, as a member of the Airport Commission, term to expire July 1st, 2022. And Mr. Clayton R. Raymond, as a member of the Airport Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2024. Those will both be sent to the Appointments Committee. And at this time, we have a special presentation by Mr. Anthony DeLucio for the Crocker School Building Committee. Mr. DeLucio, if we have you on the call, you can feel free to address the council when you're ready.
Hi, good evening, Counselors and public representatives. Also on tonight is Diana Nicholas. We're going to start with a presentation update of the building design plans, how the design has progressed over the past couple of months. Diana will walk you through the architectural process made, and then I'll jump back in and we'll wrap up with finance, budget, and what's up next on the schedule for the Crocker School. But before that, I'd turn it over to Superintendent Jokola for any opening remarks, if that's appropriate.
Certainly. Superintendent Jokola, welcome. And I'm sorry, I was informed that you had some opening remarks to make, but I completely forgot to invite you to make those beforehand.
That's okay.
You can go right ahead.
Good evening, Counselors, and thank you, Tony. So, tonight, the council will hear an update of the current project project. This is a core program project, which the MSBA has a very selective and competitive process to be accepted into this program, which we accepted into a few years ago. Project doesn't stand as for 845 students in grades 1 through 5 at Crocker Elementary. Basically, the students who are attending Crocker in grades K through 4, the project would be eligible to move up one grade as part of an overall redistricting across the school district in subsequent years. On October 28th of 2020, the MSBA invited Pittsburgh Public Schools and this project in particular to participate in the feasibility study. As Tony DeLucio mentioned, Tony's with Collier's, our owner's project manager. Now you'll hear from Diana Niklaus of SOM Architects, the architect who has been doing the architecture firm who we've retained, and has gone through presentations to both the Crocker Elementary School Building Committee and also to the full school committee. So, with that as my opening remarks, I guess, Tony, is it okay to turn the screen and mic over to Diana?
Uh, yes. Diana, do you need me to pull up the presentation?
I do, Tony. I need you to run the slides tonight. Thank you.
I'm not sure if everyone can see that.
Yeah.
Yes?
Not yet, Tony.
Mr. DeLucio, try screen sharing again, please.
Better?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, presentation of Crocker Elementary School by Diana Nicholas, SOM Architects.
Thanks, Tony. So, tonight, we're going to give you an update of where we are. We are wrapping up the schematic design. Actually, we've really finished the schematic design, and that's going to MSBA for review. So, we have a few updates from what you've seen before. We've done several renderings of the design, so this is one of them. You can see the entrance to the school on the left, and then there's a canopy into the building, and the gym would be on your right, and the offices would be on your left. And then, in the foreground, you see the new parking lot that would be added in addition to the area where we currently have parking at Crocker. This is a similar view. You can still, you can see the front of the building, and again, the canopy and the entrance to the building. You can also see the connection between the parking lot level and then the level above that where the buses are. So, just as a reminder, and you'll see this, I think, on the site plans, this site has three kind of plateaus, and so the way that the building is designed is to sit in the central plateau in order to minimize earthwork, which can be an excavation, which can really increase the cost of the building. We've located the building on that central plateau. So, then, the, on the other side of this building is the highest elevation, and then that Audubon area is just beyond the building in the back. So, I'll also just mention, you want to go to the next one, Tony? You can see the existing building on this one. It's dashed. Thanks, Tony. So, the new school is in gray, and what this means in terms of the phasing for the project is that the entire school that exists now, with the exception of the portable classrooms, will remain open and functional while the new school is being built. So, we have two site plans that we're showing. So, oh, looks like we just have one tonight, Tony, I think.
Yes, the other one will come up later.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So, this is, um, this one shows, again, as I pointed out, that the parking area and the drive for the buses, the loop that's in front of the school, the parking lot to the right, there's potentially place space beyond that parking. And then, on the, on the upper plateau, there's area for fields and outdoor learning. So, looking at the building, again, it's on that central plateau, and the only other thing I'll point out here is the, the drive that goes from the parking lot on the right, on what would be the east, up behind the building, and that is for fire truck access. So, as Tony said, we have a second site plan we're going to look at. We have one that's, that's more simplified in a way because it's, it's the sort of base level, what we need to build to keep the building meeting code requirements. But we've been recently studying the cost of the building very carefully, and there are some things that can be considered work that may occur later in order to keep our initial costs down. So, here you see the two floor plans. So, on the left, just thinking about the renderings that we looked at a minute ago, you can see the entrance to the building in the lower left, and you come into the building and into a secure area, and then someone in the offices, and that's in the yellow sort of administrative suite to the right of the entrance. Tony, I don't know if you can point that out a little bit. So, they can check who's coming into the building. We've talked about this, some, I think, before, but just as a reminder. Thanks, Tony. So, that is the administrative wing. The area that, that Tony has circled also has an orange area that is the nurses' suite. And then, the, the blue spaces just to the left of that are additional office space, occupational therapy, space for coaching for teachers, and an additional flex classroom that's up on the end, the large blue space on the end. So, as I mentioned, once you come through the security, though, you can immediately go into the gym or into the cafeteria, which is the area in purple, depending on the level of access that the community would be providing. So, this means that if, if you have an event in the cafeteria or in the gym, you can close off the rest of the building and it will remain secure. And everyone will still have access to the toilet rooms, which are kind of in the center of that administrative wing. So, again, the, the area in purple is the cafeteria, and the, the, thanks, Tony, the, the gray area just beneath that is a utility corridor that has storage spaces and things that would be used by the cafeteria staff. And then, up above the cafeteria, but also connected to cafeteria, is the music room. So, what this does is that the music room can open up, and that will give really two stages in this room. So, the, you can see there are sit steps, those three lines, the kind of angle through that space. So, the stage level is about four feet above the floor of the cafeteria. So, that naturally provides the stage above and, again, expands this area for performance. So, moving into the academic wing, you come up through that gray, Tony, can you point out that, sorry, this is hard for me to do without a mouse. Thank you. So, that's, that's part of this path that takes you through this building. So, our, our overarching concept with the design of this building is biophilic design. So, we are, in everything that we're doing, thinking about how we connect the occupants to nature, whether that is views from inside of the building out to this really beautifully tree-lined site, or we're letting light in in other spots, or we have textures or colors or shapes that are evocative of nature. So, this path through the building is meant to sort of be like you're walking through, you know, a natural landscape. So, you come in and you come into the lower volume, and we call this area that, where Tony's got the mouse, that volume is what we call the academic wing. So, it's got two grades on the lower level, so first is there, and then second is where Tony's pointing, and then, on the second floor, you have third and fourth on the top level. So, each of these learning communities has their own sort of identity and space. Within those, there are core elements that everyone on the floor would use, or you might have something like the Title I room, or the Level Reading Room, or the Teacher's Work Room. You would have teacher's toilets, students' toilets, janitor's closets, those types of things. Anything you see in that kind of bright aqua is what we call extended learning. So, the idea is that students and teachers will be able to, you know, work together outside of the, the actual classroom environment, maybe on a small project or, you know, a specific topic that needs to be reviewed. And that is something that the current Crocker doesn't have, so it offers a bit more flexibility in terms of the way that students can learn and where they can learn. So, if we go to the second level, the, the big pink box with the X in it is the upper level of the gym. That just shows that it's a tall volume, but it's not, not occupied. So, just to the right of the cursor where Tony is, is the fifth grade. So, they have their own kind of identity, being in a separate volume from the other four grades. And again, they have some of the support spaces within the core. The fifth grades would also have lockers. And then, moving deeper into this, this level, thanks, Tony, so we have, the orange area, the orange area is the media center slash library. So, it has a small office, and then it has two classrooms adjacent to it, has a health classroom and an art classroom, both of which have access to the outdoors. We have several opportunities for outdoor learning, so that is one of them. And then, when you're out there on that level, there's actually a walkway that's outdoors. It's secured, so people can't come from the other direction, but it will take you out to that upward level of the playfield. So, that does a couple of things. It's an additional, you know, safety measure with egress. It also means that if anybody wanted to add on, if the district wanted to add on to Crocker in the future, this area would be a good spot because you've got, like, the, the structure is all there. So, then, just above, just north of the media center, there's another extended learning, and then there's the ramp that goes down. So, this space is also elevated four feet above the main level of the floor, just as the first level is, so that you can accommodate a higher ceiling in the cafeteria, cafeteria below. And again, we have the, the, all the support spaces in the upper wing level as well. And then, in any of the corridors, you're always going to have a view to the outside. You can see, like, the corner glazing. When you're walking between the volumes on both levels, there is a double-height curtain wall on the right side, if you're walking from the southern half of the building up to the northern wing, to the academic wing. Tony, do you know where the curtain wall is? Like, you know where it is, but can you point it out?
Over here.
Thank you. That's what I was referring to. And then, I think you were pointing out, then also, we have a skylight in the center of the, of the academic wing that will let light into the lower area, what we're calling the biophilic court. A few more quick points on outdoor learning. So, off of the cafeteria, there's a ramp, and just outside of that, if you go over to the first level, Tony, thank you, that is an outdoor eating area and an outdoor learning area. And the site slopes up there to that top plateau, so we're trying to use the natural terrain to create sort of, really, an amphitheater, but we're trying to do so in a very minimal way, again, just relying on the topography. And then, on the other side of the building, we have another outdoor learning space that we're calling the sensory garden, and the landscape architect has worked with us on what we might put there to offer the kids sort of a way of looking at different plant life. So, I think that covers most of the floor plans. We can come back if people have questions and, and look at those. Just quickly touch on the color ideas that we have. And again, we're, we're wrapping up schematic design, so design development is when we get much more into detail on, you know, specific colors, exactly which colors, where they go, what the finishes are, in a more detailed level. So, we wanted to establish a color palette that is, again, biophilic or sort of relates to nature in some way. So, we look at the greens and the yellows as being, you know, very evocative of nature, certainly, but also, we want to use a slightly more muted palette in that, in using those colors, so it's not going to be like a garish yellow, a garish green, but sort of toned down, but consistent through the building. And then, beneath that, you see what we're considering to be the secondary palette. You can see that these are all inspirational images that other people have designed, but in the upper right, you can see sort of how one might use that secondary palette to sort of, you know, supplement the colors in the building. So, we have a few interior renderings. This is the entrance lobby, so you can see kind of to the left, the, the glass area where students and visitors would enter the building. On the, thanks, Tony, on the right, you see the trees that are on that wall that the kids are sitting against. We think that using environmental graphics is a nice way to bring in biophilia, so this is just sort of an example of something we might provide. Again, that's something we'll look at in design development. And then, you see, there are round, uh, conical domes that sit in the roof that's immediately above this area, and that lets natural light into the entrance. And then, on the left, you see the corridor that would take one down the hall to the nurses' office, the sped conference rooms, and those kinds of things. What you also see there is, uh, a material that we've been looking at using that's called OSB, and we have looked at different ways of staining it to provide these colors, but it has a texture that, I mean, it's, it's, it's got wood, and so, again, it's something that's evocative of nature and brings those colors into the space. Thanks. So, this is a preliminary rendering of the music room, I'm sorry, of the media center. So, we've, we've worked with the district on what, what we think would be most effective in this space. We have a furniture consultant. She's also been very involved in the design of this space. So, at this point, you can also see beyond the media center, there's outdoor, that's access to the outdoor learning, so you see the glazing in the back. And this is, uh, thank you. And then, you can also see the access to the classrooms that are beyond. So, you're basically at the top of the ramp. If you look over on the plan, you can see sort of a red cone of vision that shows you kind of what you're seeing in this rendering. And the reason that that low wall has a railing on it is because that is also four feet, this, this level is four feet above the hallway. So, what that does is that students can kind of see what the activities are that are happening in the media center as they're walking through other parts of the school, but they won't be right there adjacent to the folks that are up there participating in different activities. So, it's meant to create this very sort of vibrant, open space throughout the building, and that's also what we're trying to do in the cafeteria area. We really want people to feel connected to the activity that's happening as they move through the school, especially the students. Next.
Thank you, Diana. That's all we have for architecture for today, but before we go on to the next presentation, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to open it up for questions on, on the architecture and the design, or we should continue through?
Questions would be good. Hang on just a moment. I see I have Counselors Squallia and Boishman. I saw Counselor Green's had her hand up for a few minutes now, so I'll go to Counselor Green. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. And again, I just want to start off by saying that I appreciate the, the effort and the energy and the time that's gone into this. My question, and maybe it's preempting what will follow, but what, what is our capacity limit with the new school for students, for bodies in the school?
That's 845 students.
So, with...
Is the enrollment capacity limit for the school?
I'm sorry, 845 students, but with educators and support staff, are we, is that going to be about 1,000?
Uh, probably a little bit less than 1,000.
Okay. And, um, what, again, this may be preempt, but where are the, where are the operating components of, of all of these systems? Like, I see a lot of windows, which I love the fact that there's natural light, but as we know here in New England, you know, we've got the beating sun, which then, you know, the teachers complain that their room is hot, and then they want the air conditioner turned on, and then, in the winter, the windows let in the cold, and then they want the heat turned up, and then they bring in the little electric heaters, which creates problems. So, I, I'm just concerned about the, I guess, the operating systems on how you're going to balance all of these natural creations and these wonderfulness, but with the reality of it's New England and look at how crazy our weather can be. Counselor, I can speak to that some. So, in addition to orienting the building on this central plateau, as we discussed, the classroom wing, well, really, both classroom wings, is intentionally oriented to be in the optimal layout relative to the sun. So, you can see in the lower right-hand corner what, the direction of north. So, that means that, that, that nice glazing that you see in that media center rendering that's next to the corridor that Tony pointed out, that is really not going to get any direct sunlight very often, because, you know, you're not going to get direct sunlight from the north. It's really going to be from the south. So, if you think about, again, the way the building is sited, we have the gym, which, you know, doesn't have a lot of, of glazing on the south side in an area where it also will not be subject to a lot of heat gain. So, within the classrooms, we didn't show any renderings of the classrooms. They have a fair number of windows, but they're, they're oriented in a way that, again, you're not going to have a lot of heat gain into those spaces. So, your concern is valid, but it has, it is something that we have thought a lot about. We've worked with our mechanical and electrical engineers. We've looked very carefully at the way that the envelope is designed, you know, other areas where we're going to have heat gain, heat loss. And I think that, again, your, your concern is valid, but it's something that we feel that we've addressed. We'll also look very carefully in the next phases at the specifications of the glazing more carefully. I mean, we already have a very good idea of what they are, but we get into more detail on that. And, you know, glazing types these days actually are, have, are quite advanced in the way that they deal with the cold and with solar heat gain and light emission into the space. And are the operating systems, the condensers and all of the units, are they just going to be rooftop units? Yes. So, Tony, if you want to show them the area, yes, thank you. So, there is, there is an area there that's, that's off that sort of accessible roof area that we talked about, and then we have the air conditioning units on... And then we have the air conditioning units on the roof of, there are two of them on top of the academic wing. So those are not things that you're going to see much if you're, you know, if you're walking around the building, your view up to them is not, you're not going to see much of them. And then just to add to that, so the utilities come in from the east side of the site. And so we have them coming in. And so if, Tony, if you can just kind of again, point out the admin one, yeah. So the the utilities come in there and they connect right to that mechanical space. And we've we've laid that out already with our mechanical engineers.
And is this a, I didn't pay attention at the first slide, but is this a flat roof?
Well, yes, it's it's flat architecturally, but it certainly meets code in terms of the slope. And, you know, we've we've certainly thought about snow loads. I know a lot of people are concerned about that with flat roofs. But with proper detailing of structure and insulation, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. I'm I'm loving the design, the the north-south orientation, the utilization of the different levels of of earth that we already have. You kind of glossed over an OSB covering on the walls and that that's the only thing that really concerns me is OSB just, I would see that as a future maintenance concern. I I think there are maybe other better, longer lasting wood look materials that that we could utilize. You you mentioned there were some things that you wanted to consider in this project, but their initial costs might be high. And so that might be work for later. Is that one thing, is one of those the potential future addition where the soccer field would be? Or are there any other addition ideas within this plan that would allow us to be more flexible for changes in the future?
So you are correct that the soccer field area would be a natural spot for an addition. And that one would be quite substantial in size, you know, given how much land you have there. And so just as a reminder, the the design does basically build in a connector right to that space, right? So if that was built, you would simply put a roof over the connector that exists now. And that would be something that would be easy to construct. You know, the rest of the building would not be impacted during the construction of that. And then in addition, the the areas with the lower roofs, that's the white part that you see in the center of, thank you, Tony. Oh, sorry, just to the right of that, yeah. So you could build out some of that space if you chose to. And then looking at the academic wing on the lower floor, you can see where we've kind of dashed the outdoor learning areas. You could also add on there as well. So there are several opportunities. So if I could also just touch on the OSB, I didn't mean to gloss over it. It was a very intentional biophilic selection, but one of the things I'll point out about it is that it's actually more durable than drywall and it has a higher acoustical rating. So it's something that we thought would be appropriate, both in terms of maintenance. Certainly, you're not going to be dealing with maintaining that surface as much as you would be with drywall. Also, if it's stained, you're not going to have to repaint it. But we've done, we've done mockups in our office of OSB and the corners and how durable they are. We've worked with manufacturers that provide the fire treating that goes into those. And those are all what they consider to be Green Guard certified. So it's very, it's non-toxic. So it's not any more flammable, again, than drywall would be. But, you know, when when we get into design development, we will have a much more detailed presentation, I imagine, on finishes.
So you you mentioned a lot of biophilic design. We have the, you know, the north-south orientation. There's there's green roofs mentioned. I was wondering if if this building is is taking that any further? Is there like a LEED certification that we might be looking into? Or are there any other, you know, are we considering solar panels or gray water? You know, what's the extent of the green roof? What is the material of the roof? I assume all the roof will be able to be walked on except for the mechanical space?
Yes. Okay, so I'll just go kind of one by one. You will be able to walk on the roof, obviously, because, you know, to have access to the mechanical mechanical units. Other biophilic concepts. So we've talked about, as you pointed out, building orientation. We've talked about, you know, things like environmental graphics and colors and textures. You know, the outdoor learning areas are a big piece of that and things like the sensory garden where students are really, they're literally engaging with the outdoors. But there's also this educational piece. You know, we have different forms that could be that are considered biophilic. We haven't talked really about the exterior of the building, but it's composed of fiber cement panels, which are, again, very durable, very affordable. And we've designed the exterior such that the majority of the classroom wings, for instance, will have sort of a single color, very straightforward rectangular layout. But then on areas like the gym and some of the stair cores, as you go around the building, that you you don't see it as clearly on this particular rendering, but it's a combination of a greenish panel and then more of an earth colored panel. And that inspiration really does come from, you know, looking at a forest and the way that trees sort of, you know, are laid out across the landscape and you see between the trees and and you have these sort of angular forms as we've designed and you can sort of see that in this rendering as well. So we're using that more selectively because it's a little bit visually more complex. But that's that is very much part of our biophilic concept as well. And also the areas that have the the curtain wall, the glazing, like the full pipe glazing with the blues and greens, that is intended to emit these different colors into the building. And, you know, you'll have reflections on the floors. So this but but students will come to realize, you know, that those squares on the floor will move, right? Because they're, they'll they'll recognize that the sun is impacting that wall in a different way during the day. So those are some of the biophilic concepts. We haven't another thing that we've done that's not really in this presentation is that in the extended learning areas, we have an idea that in some of them, not all of them, but in the ones certainly that are in the core areas of the learning communities, those would be sort of themed and they might be different biomes. So like one would be the beach extended learning area. And in another grade level, you might have one that's the mountains. And in another one, you may have a different biome. So you're, you know, the intent is that students, as they go through the school, will sort of be associated with a different biome. And, you know, that's just, again, it's another sort of educational piece that brings in a biophilic concept.
Can you hear me? Hello?
I'm sorry, I did not.
Oh, will be, will we be looking into LEED certification for the Crocker Elementary Building?
Thank you for bringing it up. Yes, we we have already kicked off the LEED process that we needed to do early in the design and we did. So, you know, things like material selections and working with the mechanical, electrical plumbing engineers, civil engineers, all of that, we're we're definitely pursuing LEED, yes.
MSBA has very specific requirements for high performance school standards. And so we have their their checklist working through, as Diana said, any material that you picked. You get so many points, mechanical systems that we discussed earlier. So many points for energy consumption, energy renewal, all of the materials that go into the building, including recycling and demolition of the existing facility. All all get categorized into our high performance school score.
Thank you. Do we have a target for the LEED certification? You know, gold, silver, gold, platinum?
We we do not at this point. At this point, we're we're throwing everything in the pot. It it comes out as feasibility, study, schematic design. And now we really start in design development, getting in, as Diana said, to the specific systems, the specific wall panels, evaluating the initial cost versus long term durability that you you mentioned on one of the products. So we start doing that very detailed balancing act of initial cost, green ability, sustainability and and long term durability over the next, you know, six months, if you will.
Thank you. One more question. You mentioned the end of the architectural presentation. Will there be a presentation on maybe structural systems or the HVAC system, as Counselor Green had mentioned?
Not not during this presentation. Those those systems are again, schematically developed enough to support the building, but we don't have what we have are basis of designs and design narratives that talk about the sizes of the systems, different options of the systems that are out there, but those systems are not specified or detailed to the point of presentation at this time. When the MSBA gives us the approval to move forward with design development, that's when you take those concepts that are in schematic and feasibility and turn them into a bit more specificity and reality.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Next up, we have Counselor Boeschmann.
I got a couple of questions, but I also want to ask Bob Jockler after the presentation, a couple of questions too, if that's okay, Mr. President?
Only if they relate directly to this project.
Yes, it does. Okay. My first question is this. I'm not a carpenter, but always when I wanted to put a couple of skylights in on a roof, carpenters always say it's bad to start digging holes in the roof because you have nothing but problems with leakage. And I noticed you said that you're going to have an open concept in the, one of the corridors where you get daylight coming in from the roof. Is that a good move or no?
So I can speak to that, Tony. You can
Okay.
follow up as well. I think I may have misspoke in a bit, but we don't, we don't have any actual skylights in the traditional sense of the term at all. We have them in two locations and it's it's a, it's a conical shaped system that sits into the roof. And so it's a smaller area, you know, it's, I mean, it might be that they're different sizes. So one of them might be two feet in diameter and one of them might be four feet in diameter, but they are in a limited area. They're not as complex to install or maintain as a traditional skylight.
And then my my other question for you is this. I went on a tour one time on one of the school systems in in our city. I'm hoping that you have, I know we're not going to talk about it today, but I'm hoping that you have zones in every room where where the teachers can actually control the heat. I noticed that on this tour that I took in the middle of January, some of the rooms were seventy five plus degrees and they had to keep the windows open. I says, how do you learn anything? You know, the kids would be tired from that much heat. Are you going to have different zones? Is that going to be a plan so that the the teacher can control the heat in the rooms themselves and not based on one thermostat sets all? So if you get way down the end of the room, you're cold down there, but you're hot up in the beginning.
So yes, there there will be different zones throughout the complex, throughout the building, sides, floors, angles that are addressed by the building management system. What we don't find to be effective is giving individual controls to each room or each teacher's space. This building is going to be very much controlled by a building management system. It's going to take in a consideration outside temperature, humidity, relative humidity. And that system is going to be computer managed by the school facilities director in a way that if there are areas that need attention, those would be addressed through the building property management. The other thing that MSBA requires for all new public schools is is what's called systems commissioning or building commissioning, where this project will have a third party entity overseeing all of the mechanical systems, overseeing the design in in installation, implementation, building systems, training, maintenance and upkeep, management process that will be turned over to the city when when the building is complete. So that's generally how the schools are operating effectively today.
And my final question is this, and probably I'll probably get a lot of feedback on this one. I hope we're not going to use I hope we use pretty close to the top of the line on the heating systems because we had a high school in American Village for this, that we had to replace the heating system after ten to fourteen years of service on a brand new building. So I'm hoping that we use good quality stuff that'll last quite a while and not after ten years, get rid of it and get something new. That's my only objective because I don't plan on being down here ten years from now, but I'm hoping that that happens.
I I would agree that that's all of our.
All right, thank you.
Goal.
Okay, Tony, I think this is where you start your presentation after no other questions.
I had a question. Bernie Schultz has his hand raised, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
But I'm sorry, I do have, I do have additional questions. Still. Counselor Schultz, you have the floor. Although I will say if the if there are time constraints on the availability of the presenters, please do let me know. We will try to work with that. Counselor Schultz, you have the floor.
Thank you. My question was about the getting back to the roof that Counselor Green brought up. I was just wondering if MS, the 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 building authority, if they allow for sloped roofs any longer? Because when we we built the the high school twenty years ago, the superintendent at the time, Phil Fallon, he wanted all sloped roofs. And we only got sloped roofs for the for the classrooms and the other large structures, the cafeteria and the fieldhouse didn't have sloped roofs. So I was just wondering what their thinking was now. I know it's probably more expensive to have sloped roofs, of course, but I just wondered what the thinking was, if that's been explored at all.
Yeah, I mean, typically and in general, these large footprints, if you will, of a building make your traditional sloped roof pretty expensive as well as not not really effective. What happened?
Lost the presentation.
While you're looking for that, Tony, I just want to emphasize.
If if you could just imagine for a second, building a sloped roof at a one in four or one in six pitch over this, you know, we're we're going to get into pretty extensive structural systems that that don't really do much for keeping the water out anymore than our traditional flat roofs around New England. Rubber roofs, green roofs have come a long way. Much more so than than a traditional slope shingled roof.
Tony, I would just add that, you know, we've also studied how this building could actually host a lot of PVCs. So the structure would be designed in order to support that. And that's something I know Pittsburgh has 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 implemented, you know, use of solar panels in the past. And we think that that would be, you know, beneficial to the community. It helps with our LEED certification. I mean, that's so while they may not be there on day one, the flat roof does offer the ability to do that.
So we can do solar panels with the flat roof as well?
Absolutely. And then you can actually orient them in, you know, the the most the most efficient way, you know, that that is going to give you the highest yield. Whereas a sloped roof, you're you're going to limit the square footage that you can cover with with the panels. And you're going to be, you know, relying on that roof geometry.
Yeah, the the other, only other question I had was, I guess, following up with Counselor Boeschmann, he talked about the heating systems. I've heard that there's been a lot of problems with the high school with the with the windows and the you know, the quality of the windows. I'm hoping that the windows, the quality of the windows will be a lot better this time than they were twenty years ago.
That is our hope as well. We're happy to look at what was utilized then, if you if you have the documentation, but but we feel that we are selecting, you know, a very appropriate windows in terms of, you know, keeping the building as tight and as efficient as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I had Counselor Hughes. Oh, you had your hand up on the digital...
Oh, that was a mistake.
Okay, no problem. In that case, I believe we are done with questions. Counselor Scollier?
Did I miss the timeline? Do we have an expected timeline for final design and then bid and construction?
So that's coming up in the next piece of the presentation.
Okay.
Go right ahead, then.
Okay. And thank you, Diana, for your help tonight.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Our next presentation is a presentation that was recently given to the School Building Committee, and it is very much relative to our submission to MSBA for the schematic design feasibility study completion that we're talking about tonight. One of the things that we needed to address with the Building Committee and with the school district is the options of construction delivery method. Many of you may be familiar with the traditional design bid. Do a set of documents, put them out to bid, and build. It's a traditional approach to Chapter 149 in Massachusetts, where the SOM team would complete 100% bid documents. That's probably in a magnitude of 10 months' duration to put those drawings together, and then eight to 10 weeks of bidding before we're able to start construction. For projects over $10 million, which is certainly in this project falls in there, we have to pre-qualify our subs, so it's not... If you've been familiar with public projects and the fear of getting the low bidder, for projects over $10 million, we actually have the luxury of pre-qualifying the bidders. So we get to look at their references and their past projects in advance of giving them drawings, and they don't even get to bid if they're not pre-qualified. Couple of the things that you don't get in that traditional method compared to construction management at risk is you don't get to start early construction, which in some projects, there's a benefit to be able to either add the new wing on, take part of the building down, and move back and forth, or, you know, even a demolition or an early site package because we don't see that as a big bang for the buck or a big plus to this project. And then traditionally, you still award to the lowest responsible bidder. However, you've pre-qualified those bidders. On the right-hand side of this chart is the alternative delivery method of construction management at risk. It is a qualification-based selection, not similar to the pre-qual of subs. It's actually got more parts to its selection process, which tends to add dollars to the cost of the bidding process. So inherently, more dollars, which is what those dollar signs represent. And so what we have in the middle here is how these two scenarios or approaches relate to Crocker Elementary School. So you still have, on the CM at-risk side, pre-qualification of subs. As I mentioned, pre-construction or early construction services, those might add more cost to the project because you're starting construction earlier, and it actually extends longer in many cases. The solicitation for filed sub-bids is generally the same, but you're negotiating a GMP at some point when you're already well into construction. So during that early phase, there might be a lot more unknowns that can generate costs that you, the district, would be more responsible for. And with the CM at risk becomes a higher degree of management. There's what's called open book accounting. There's a lot more folks involved from the OPM, from the designer. There's just a lot more management in the CM at-risk management process. So it's with those ideas in mind, thinking that the way the design is currently playing out, we build a new building behind, we make some access roads in. We've got great experience on the project team with developing new buildings on occupied sites, being able to tear the building down, the existing building down over a summer break, those types of schedules that will fall during the construction process, and utilizing those to the best advantage of the project. We recommended to the Building Committee last week that we proceed with 149, design, bid, build, delivery in a more traditional method. We discussed that with the School Building Committee, which is part of the MSBA's process, that we described the methodology in our recommendation, and the School Building Committee did in fact vote to proceed with design, bid, build as the preferred delivery method for construction. Next, we took the Building Committee through, and I'll try to enlarge this a little bit for you, the site plan that Diana and her team put together, which in this case is on the right-hand side, considered Plan for Future Buildout. So it shows extensive play areas, outdoor walking paths that you can see over here, more garden areas, more interactive environment, outdoor environment areas. We have the evacuation assembly area, which again is that ramp coming off the roof. We have various play areas that get constructed on the upper-level plateau. We have some grading and work around the outdoor learning areas that we talked about. What tends to happen is, as we're going through this process, we're weighing all these things, as I said earlier, balancing the cost, balancing the constructibility, balancing the needs of the school district and the educational plan. MSBA very clearly caps site work. While they generally agree that these are wonderful amenities to have, they would like you to pay for them, and they only take a part in a very specific percentage. And their cap is 8% of all the construction cost is capped for site work at about 8%. And so as Diana and her team were going through this, and as you heard from her, you know, we're extending the parking lot in the front of the building. We're creating these parking areas. Police and fire need access pretty much all around the building that they would need to get to in various emergency events. We have now pared this back to what is planned in the current bid-build scenario. What helps us get closer to the MSBA cap? What can we afford within those boundaries? And how can we best set this site up so that what we are buying and what we are planning on constructing lays out for the city the ability to add those other elements of the project in the future with as little backpedaling or as little wasted construction as possible? So what you see here are the walkways that would be planned and are currently in the design process. They're currently in our estimate that is being submitted to MSBA, so that we want to plan for the district being able to build out in the future, should funds become available, those other site amenities. But we want to provide the infrastructure and the support for those. And so those are the kind of balancing adds, deducts that we go through and have been going through with the School Building Committee, with the educational team, through several different working groups that we have involved in the project, but looking at all the ways of what do we build today that allows for the best use in the future as well. Our Balancing Act results in a total project budget. Several weeks ago, Diana and her team, it's Tom, put together a complete package of all the mechanical design narratives, all the roof details, renderings of various elements within the building, the types of schematic design that you've seen presented earlier tonight. Goes out to two separate estimators, independent of each other. They lock themselves in a closet, whatever they do. They plow through all the drawings, all the information that's been provided. They each come up with an estimate, a full deep estimate for the project. We take those estimates. We get everybody back in the room together, and we developed what's called a reconciled estimate. So we're making sure that then each of the two estimators has been asked and answered the same question, provided the same information. We look at everything from why one guy might think concrete is $240 a cubic yard. The other guy might think it's $260 a cubic yard. So we talk about why that is, what are they seeing in the cost of rebar, and we try to get each entity a little bit closer, just trying to keep working that to get a little bit closer so that we have an effective total budget that everybody understands and agrees that we can work to. Couple of things that you see here that jump out, and those are in the middle of these two project budgets. One thing I'll point out, as Superintendent Jokla mentioned, design enrollment is 845 for this facility, which is approximately a couple hundred over, 180 over from where the school was originally. The original statement of interest to MSBA was sometime before Colliers and SOM get hired, but it was back around 2017. So when your project was initially submitted and put into the program from MSBA at $60 million, it was back in 2017. Our site cap, as we have it today, pared down from what you've seen to, you know, code-compliant site, still leaves $838,000 of ineligible that is directly borne by the district, by the city, to meet the minimum site plan that we have for the building. MSBA allows $333 per square foot for construction. Our current project is approximately $419 per square foot. Now, before you get shocked over that, it's not a result of over-design. MSBA has not increased their allowable cost per square footage in over seven years. So while costs of construction continues to rise, costs of construction continues to escalate. MSBA has a set income, right? It's based off the sales tax. So they're having to stretch their dollars further every year. And the way they've done that is by not reallocating or adjusting their allowable cost per square foot. So when they say it's an 80/20 split, it's 80/20 split if you can possibly design a building to $333 a square foot, which nobody is able to achieve currently or hasn't been able to achieve in the last three or four, five years. And so that's an overage there that, again, is going to be borne by the district. And so what these two documents show, these two columns, is that our effective rate of reimbursement, which everybody has read probably the various documents out there, as an 80/20, is actually working out to more of a 70/30 split, where that city share will be somewhere between 29.9 and 31, so effectively 30% and not an 80/20 split. And then just to wrap up, as Diana was indicating, as you've all asked, what about the windows? What about the OSB board? We continue to work in this right-hand column with what we call VE, value engineering, right? How do we, again, try to balance and get any money out of this project that doesn't have a good value, that has longer maintenance or more costly maintenance issues or doesn't impact negatively by its removal or change in scope, the educational plan? So those are things that we want to hold dear, right? We want our building to be sustainable. We want it to be a long-term, durable, efficiently managed building that meets the education program. And so between now and the end of construction, we will continue to work this column to hopefully reduce the overall cost, at the same time, trying to reduce the cost to the district or increase as close as we can get to that 80/20 split. And I will say, one of the biggest things that comes out of our next submission to the MSBA is we'll have two opportunities where the MSBA will sit with us, with the district and the design team, and really drill down on all these numbers to make sure that everything is categorized right, that they understand the durability, initial cost complexities, that our systems are appropriate for not only your school but in comparison to every other school that the MSBA is spending large amounts of money on across the state. So we shared this with the committee, shared with them the effective reimbursement rate, and we needed to ask their vote. Specifically, the MSBA has very strict language that says the School Building Committee has been presented this information, understands the cost ramifications, and authorizes the OPM to submit, on the district's behalf, the design concepts, feasibility, and schematic design study to the MSBA for their board approval. And with that, we have somewhat of that project schedule. Our submission... Excuse me. Our submission is due to the MSBA on May 5. We had to notify them last week electronically via template, the email that they have, that we had completed all of this, that we had our meeting with the School Building Committee on Thursday. MSBA received our email on Friday, saying that, yes, we met. We reviewed all of the documentation, all of the cost ramifications with the School Building Committee, and they voted to direct us to proceed with submission. So that was step number one that went in. On April 27, we are due to submit to them an electronic version of everything that you've seen and all of the documents that we have, including the district's educational plan, schematic design feasibility study, cost models, everything else. We submit that electronically. We have until May 5 to submit disc and hard copies to them. They will have, as I said, budget conference and review conferences with us between May 5 and probably mid-June, June 15, June 20 or thereabouts. It goes to the MSBA Board of Directors for their approval on June 23. So we would expect that any conferences that we have, any review comments that we have from the MSBA, we would need to get from them and get responses back to them by the 23. Sometime after the 23, we expect we would have an approval from the Mass School Building Authority Board of Directors, directing the project team, directing the district to proceed with design development and on through to construction, should you achieve project funding. From the district's, from the MSBA board meeting on the 23 and from their following approval, the district has 120 days in which to secure funding and sign a project funding agreement with the MSBA. And that's really the fine details that we work through with the city auditor, city council, finance, administration, to make sure that the project is fully fundable from the city side and that the city is able to enter into a project funding agreement with the MSBA. And so that would take us 120 days from June 23. Puts us out into September. Puts us out into September somewhere, October. And then from there, we would continue with the full design process. As I mentioned, that's probably a 10-month process. From there, there's eight, 10, 12 weeks of bidding. So construction would be starting somewhere, you know, a year from the project funding agreement of, you know, depending on how quickly the city can develop the funding approach and those approvals, you know, it would be at least a year out before we start any solid construction on the site. And so that concludes the Crocker Elementary School presentation for this evening, and I'm happy to take additional questions.
I have Counselor Green.
Thank you, Tony, for that. My question, I guess, in doing the simplified math that I did, with 845 as the capacity for now K through 5, that's 170 students per grade. Is that, is that going to be enough room based on, you know, based on our population? Or are we going to outgrow this space quicker than it can be built to completion?
Counselor Green, I'll answer that question. So the, to clarify, the proposed Crocker project would be a 1 through 5, not K through 5. The MSBA requires that when a building project is submitted, it is either for those students in there, K through 4, or following those students. So the 1 through 5 is part of a strategic redistricting, which would convert South Street Elementary into a kindergarten center, and McKay and Ryan Gold would also become 1 through 5s. Longsjo and Memorial would be 6 through 8, and the high school would remain 9 through 12.
And have those other projects come before our school committee or before us so that we know what those numbers look like?
We've had, actually throughout this process, we've had two enrollment studies performed. So we feel, we had one performed in the beginning of the process, and we had one performed almost about a year or so ago. So we feel that the enrollment of the school and the redistricting is sufficient for the projected enrollment, you know, studies that we've had perform.
Okay, and I guess to Tony, my other only question is about the taking into account the driveways or the streets. So Crocker Ave and then Whittamore Street, you know, we hear all the time from residents about, you know, congestion and parents having to sit in the parent pickup line for, you know, hours at a time, and then it congests the streets. How, how is the parking or the, I guess, the drop-off and pickup with either by parents or school buses going to be different with this new school than it is now, which at times doesn't work?
So I just popped this up so that you can see on a little bit larger, the new bus loops. In this gray area is the existing parking, and then we create this new loop that you'll see buses looping closer to the building here, parent drop-off being able to still loop through a parking lot and have access for students to get through here. This is, we do have a traffic study consultant as part of the project team, that's again mandated by MSBA. They've done traffic study on the area, including Crocker and the surrounding area, approach areas. They've made recommendations and developed a report that has been issued to Nick Bossonetto and the highway folks. We've got that information in hand. We need to submit that to the MSBA as well. What we haven't done is taken and had a full-fledged meeting to talk about what that means, how we address it. We know we need to address those elements in the next phase of design. Right now, some of schematic design and feasibility is just finding that homework, doing our homework and doing the due diligence to find what do we need to address and how best to address it in the next phase of design. So those reports can be made available, as any of this information can be, if you wanted to drill down further into it. As part of the school building committee, Nick Bossonetto is on that committee. So he does have that information, and he is able to address that with the building committee as we proceed with design.
Tony, can I just add that we actually have two drop-offs for parents now?
Sure.
And the way that the traffic is designed on the site, that the buses are really outside of the car traffic. So we've, we've thought very carefully about that. And again, the second, the second, having two parent drop-offs will help significantly as well. So, but as Tony said, you'll get more information as well in design development.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, oh, am I unmuted? I guess I'm a little bit more concerned. I think this is a wonderful project. I hope, I hope we're able to, able to do it. But working in the building industry, I see the increase in costs for building supplies on a daily basis. And I'm going to give you a perfect example. OSB in particular is one of the least, was the most cost-effective type of plywood, non-plywood, I guess, to go with. I watched it go from $799 to $1199 to $1499 to $1799 to $2099, and today's price of $2399 for a half-inch piece of OSB. So the costs are increasing daily. I know estimates are only being held for, for maybe building a house for five days. I, I don't know how you're going to be able to really factor in the cost of this project. And the demand is so high that supply is low. So does this all get factored into the feasibility study?
A lot of it does. We do carry, you know, typical escalation costs and what the estimators are seeing within market fluctuations. You know, we're carrying escalation of the midpoint of construction, so that might be mid-2023 for construction. And we've got a long way to go to get there. We understand and we see the same things that you're seeing with building materials, whether it's SOM, Colliers, the design team. We've all got other projects that are going through the same fluctuations and material increases that you've raised. And we need to continue to look at those elements. And that's where, when we talk about value engineering, we're going to have some more of those discussions, just as we did here, from looking at a very extensive site plan, very built out, to a very minimal one. We're going to do the same thing with flooring materials. We're going to do the same thing with OSB. We're going to look at different composite roof structures, roof systems, you know, is it a white roof? Is it green roof? Is it a living roof? You know, what other types of costs can we look at as a means for making this a palatable, long-term, durable building to meet the educational program for the district, right? And that's, at this stage, it's a living, breathing project. It changes daily, weekly, hourly, by the concerns of many constituents and many team members that raise various points of concern.
Thank you.
Counselor Squalia?
Thank you. Yeah, the, the, thank you for explaining the, the MSBA funding procedure, you know, the 80/20 is what we always kind of go by, but, you know, knowing that our effective reimbursement would actually be more like 70/30, that, that concerns me, especially because the project looks so fantastic as it is, and to value engineer, you know, I think crucial elements would be disappointing. So I hope that we can, I hope that we can afford this school, certainly. But I did have one question for Superintendent Jokula, kind of segueing on what Counselor Green said about the bus approach and what you mentioned about the, the traffic study. Are we also looking at grants, Safe Roots to School or other infrastructure grants for Bigelow Drive, maybe crosswalks across, you know, Mechanic Street, maybe, you know, the width of Bigelow Drive is very wide, and the pavement is in poor condition, maybe a multi-use, you know, path, pedestrian and bike path that's, that's raised from the street for safety? Are we looking at, you know, grants in collaboration with the MSBA funding?
Yeah, you know, we are, we're always looking at the Safe Roots to School program. We have that now in Pittsburgh. And Nick Bossonetto, Director of the DPW, has been in loop on the Bigelow Drive discussions for a few months now. So there, he's aware of any potential, I guess, upgrades or improvements that may need to be made on that road.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Janice Holly? Counselor Janice Holly, you have the floor.
My apologies, thank you. Mr. DeLuzio, when are these numbers going to be hard and fast? When are they going to be finalized for council approval on a loan order?
So that would be after the June 23rd MSBA board meeting. So when they, when they come out of their board meeting and they approve the project to move forward, new design development, the, the district has 120 days to secure funding. I've talked to Calvin Brooks a little bit about a schedule for how many meetings are required for a loan order, some of that process that I can't speak to in detail. But we are looking at that 120-day and how, how many of those meetings and in which order they would need to occur.
And the, can you please tell us how much, I don't have my calculator, I mean, how much of this 60, so the column on the right, total project budget, 63 million?
Yes.
How much of that 63 million is contingency?
So the contingencies, you can see up above, there's, there's a few contingencies that get, get added at this stage, right?
So is it, is it, so you start at the 2250, the construction contingency?
Yes.
So we've got that, we've got the 1764, 530, 45470, 2.5 million for the owner's contingency? And then potentially eligible owner's contingency, is that additional? Let's add that too?
That would be if you stayed within the cap, but we're already over the cap.
Yep. So would I add that to my contingency calculation?
Yes.
Okay, so that's nine and a half, and then the total potentially eligible contingency of 2985? Or is that 298?
That's, that's the, that's the total.
Okay, so the 2985470 does not include the ineligible construction contingency of 1764 and the construction contingency of 2250, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the 2250 plus the 1765, plus the 2985, so the contingency is about $7 million?
Yep.
So 7 million, 7 million divided by the 63019 means there's an 11.1% contingency on this, correct?
Yeah, and that would be normal for this stage of a project, if we were just conversationally talking, to carry about 10% contingency?
Yep.
Would make sense.
So, so these numbers are not final, correct?
No, they are not.
Okay.
They are living, breathing, work in progress.
Yep, so on the, on the 70% MSBA reimbursement versus the 80, that is the, the standard advertisement that municipalities follow to the letter for planning purposes. You mentioned earlier a comment about MSBA, that $333 square foot amount, they haven't increased that in how many years?
I want to say eight.
So this is, this is a frustrating aspect to me that the, the public needs to be aware of. Before any of us get giddy and go to the public and say that we didn't properly plan for this, first of all, every municipality plans at the 80%. Second of all, that is a very telling piece of information that no one could have foreseen. And that is the fact that MSBA has kept their cap the same for eight years, while, as Counselor Fleming correctly said, construction costs continue to increase. So this harkens me back to the lovely program the state neglects on a willing, on an annual basis called Chapter 90 Road Funding, where they haven't increased that in 15 years while costs go up. So they're very consistent at the state level with adequately funding or staying on top of inflation and cost increases over the years. So eight years, they haven't raised this. So that means that every municipality that banked on 80% going back eight years ago had no way of knowing MSBA was going to sit on their thumbs and not increase this. But I guess maybe it is our fault because the state's not good at increasing anything, because they know that the local elected officials will take all the fire. They don't care. So that is amazing to me. So before anyone starts talking about affordability, that is a huge piece of this puzzle, that they haven't increased that cap in eight years. I don't know how they justify that. It's certainly not because they don't have the money, because the state budget has grown by over $12 billion in the last 12 years, and not a penny to roads and not a penny to schools. So, you know, the priorities are right in line with where we need them to be, obviously. So that's very, very upsetting, but I don't, I don't fault the city in the least. The former administration, the 2015 estimates, always assumed 80%. We've always done that. And a lot of other cities and towns, I've actually read this in the news, they're getting surprised by this because they were banking on 80%. So this is just another lovely foresight of our state government, not accounting for inflation or construction increase costs and bearing it on the municipalities, because again, they know where the residents go. They go to us. They don't go to the state legislator or the governor. They come to us, so they're, they're shielded. So I just wanted to point that out, that that is a very big piece of this pie of why it's 70% and not 80. And I'm hoping we can get that 70% higher up, but even at the $20 million minimum district share, coupled with the loan for City Hall that we took out, we would still be in about $42 million additionally with the airport loans that we have too. And the auditor could chime in, but I'm not asking him to. I just know from the debt service that we can afford somewhere around $45 million at any given time. So worst-case scenario, if this were to be $20 million, we can still afford this in our normal debt structure, between this and the City Hall project. So that's not an issue. The, the issue becomes how MSBA is negligent in increasing this cap. And there was no way that the city, or any city for that matter, could have planned for that when the debt structure was created six, seven years ago. No way. I would argue to the council that the $63 million total project budget, as it stands right now, and that's not a hard number, if you all recall, we had in our debt service forecast 60 million, pretty, pretty close. We had 60 million for years, and this is just above that, and it probably can get really close to it. So from a total project cost, we were almost spot-on. What we didn't account for was MSBA being negligent. So, I mean, I would argue this to our state legislature, no, 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 no dice on the road, so I'm not very confident on the schools. But, you know, the state will end up waking up one day 15 years from now and say, oh, jeez, we have to increase this crap. We haven't done anything in 20 years. But I get, it's only been eight years, so that's, we're not there yet, apparently. So the total project cost is pretty, pretty close to what we forecasted. It's that 10% that we're getting bid on because of MSBA's negligence. It's that 10% that we're getting bid on because of MSBA's negligence. So I just wanted to point that out. And the last question I have is, the grades 1 through 5 redistricting superintendent? You said that, how many studies was that based off of? You had, how many studies done?
We had two enrollment forecasts.
Two enrollment forecasts, okay.
Plus, that was part of the strategic visioning that came out of the strategic visioning that we completed over two years ago with Frank Locker and the architects. And, I mean, we had community input on, I think we had a current city councillor on that committee as well, that planning committee. So it was, I think we had over 50 people involved.
Yeah, so that's my takeaway with this presentation right now, is the numbers aren't finalized yet. The city can't afford this worst-case scenario. We hope it doesn't get to that point, but the biggest takeaway for me is that 70% that no one foresaw and is entirely on MSBA's negligence. And if you want any evidence of that, look at the total project budget, very close to what we forecasted six, seven, eight years ago. So it's one thing if that number were 70, 75 million. This is pretty close. I want to say, just really quick math, it's within 5% of our estimate eight years ago, seven years ago. So that's a great job. We just didn't anticipate, although we probably should because we've been bitten so many times by them that the state is asleep at the wheel. So thank you very much for your presentation, and I look forward to the numbers when they're finalized, and we will have this further discussion on the procurement of the funding. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor DeNataly, the big overage is just right there in the middle of the page. Now, that difference between the 333 and the 419 is 9.8 million. If we could get them effectively halfway, it changes the entire makeup of this project.
And they have no incentive to do it because they don't, no one knows who the MSBA is. They're an agency under the state that doesn't get any kind of air cover, airtime, nothing is out in the open with them. Some people may take advantage of this and tell the public that we screwed up, we didn't screw up. This is just, we're just a victim of the state's continued negligence where they find billions and billions every year for programs that I don't even know what they're paying for, but they can't find money for raising the cap on school funding. And just so people know, MSBA is funded by your sales tax. One penny of every dollar you spend on sales tax goes into this fund, and I would assume that this is legislature-driven.
Counselor?
Once again.
Counselor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you did yield the floor. Can we allow the presenter to speak? He was in the middle of a sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. DeLuzio, did I cut you off? I'm sorry.
No, I'm all set. I just wanted to point out for you that the 9.8 in the middle of the page.
Yeah, so that's it. I mean, I assume this is legislature-driven, and they were asleep at the wheel with the school funding until they woke up two years ago. They were asleep at the road funding, they're asleep with this. But they were able to raise $13 billion to fund other stuff, so priorities, I guess. So, thank you.
If there are no further questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. DeLuzio and Ms. Nicholas. This was a very informative presentation, and we will be looking forward to seeing what you come up with going forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you, counselors. Good evening.
Next, we have the report from the council as a whole committee. The committee met on April 13, 2021, obviously. The committee considered two ordinances submitted from the mayor's office as well as a petition submitted by myself. The committee recommended that the ordinances both be held and further made some fairly detailed recommendations on the petition 07321, which can be read in the record. I am, however, going to ask that we pull 7321 from the report before acting on it. Thank you, counselor. I have a motion and second. This was actually just a request to take it separately from the remainder of the report, so I don't think we actually need a vote on it, but I do certainly appreciate the support from both my colleagues. So the remaining two items, the recommendation of the committee to hold 06821 and 06921, those items are before the council.
Move to hold.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the committee to hold 068 and 06921. Speaking on the motion, if there are no objections, we will, I have, is that an objection, Counselor DeNataly?
Well, I'm against holding it.
Okay, in that case, I will, we will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I just confirm verbally with the counselors on screen? Counselor Fleming? Counselor Fleming?
This is to hold that just when I see I'm holding.
Hmm? I'm sorry, you're cutting out Counselor. I'll come back to you in just a moment. Counselor Green?
Yes, to hold.
Thank you. And I know Counselor DeNataly said he's a no. Counselor Schultz? You are muted, Counselor.
Yes, to hold.
Thank you. And Counselor Fleming, I see you're back with us?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that passes 10 to 1. We now have 07321. I'm going to ask unanimous consent to also take, excuse me, let me get the site, 08321 out of order. That is just the follow-up petition to bring Chapter 48, Section 57G before the council. I am going to, I understand that both the mayor and the police chief would like to make some brief statements on this matter before we consider it. Mr. Mayor, you may address the council.
Mr. President, I had several clarifying statements that I wanted to make tonight to put an effort into placing all of this into context, but I'm available for any counselor that'd like that information, but I understand we'll be possibly, if it's voted on tonight, take this up and get it in two weeks, so I'll make my full statement at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief?
Mr. President, as the mayor said, I was going to come here this evening tonight and speak in opposition to that petition. However, if this is going to be held this evening, I would defer, just like the mayor, and I will be happy to come back in two weeks and give my opinion on specifically 57G as it relates to state law, unless any council has any question of me at this point. But I would defer and be back in two weeks to give my position on that specific law. Is there any questions that I can answer the council at this point?
Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, I was wondering if you could just have a little bit on, to understand a little more about the 57G as it relates to the difference between here and other cities, how it worked or how it didn't work.
Is that okay, Mr. President?
You can.
From my understanding of 57G, first of all, it's a 50-year-old piece of legislation that was enacted in the early '70s to compensate fire and police chiefs. I came here specifically to speak about how I feel as it relates to police chiefs across the state. If you read the language in itself, it connects police and fire at the hip. And my concern with this piece of ordinance is, by connecting it at hip, it's going to be in conflict with Chapter 40 of our code, whereas it relates to compensation for police chiefs. One thing says one thing and another thing says another thing. There's many other reasons that I would get into of how I feel that it creates specific conflicts for a chief as they negotiate with their public safety unions. But I can go on in many different avenues how I feel that it's going to create a conflict and hinder my ability to work with my police union in an effective manner.
Thank you. I also see a hand from Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you. And through you to the chief, I guess, if I'm reading correctly, under Chapter 48, the specific section, are we not ultimately then giving the state the responsibility of setting the salary versus keeping that power or control, or whatever word you want to use, here on the local level? I just want to understand if I'm reading that correctly.
My opinion is, by adopting 57G, it's going to go specifically in relationship to whatever collective bargaining agreement was settled upon, either through the mayor and the city council. Thus, at least from a police perspective, I am not speaking on a fire perspective, thus it creates a conflict for me to negotiate effectively with my police unions. But more importantly, with the adoption of 57G, it's in confliction with Chapter 40, Section 24, specifically compensation of police chief in the city of Pittsburgh. So that's a major concern, where you could be adopting one resolution that's in confliction with another one in how you compensate your department heads of public safety.
And in fact, it is for reasons of that nature, to ensure that whatever path we follow is properly considered, analyzed, we make sure that we're not accidentally doing something that is not intended. That I would suggest that we hold both of these items for the moment or send them back to committee for the purpose of giving us time to do further research and make this process as streamlined and airtight as we can and ensure that we don't have any negative consequences on the police department or on any other city operation.
Move that the two petitions be held in committee. Second.
I have a motion and second to hold both petitions in committee. All those, oh, speaking on the motion, Counselor DeNataly?
I'm going to be voting against this because I am 100% opposed to this. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. President. In light of more information I have, I will be voting against this measure as well.
All right. Counselor Green?
Are we opposed to holding it or are we opposed to the language of the motion? Or the petition, I guess?
Either Counselors DeNataly or Hughes may answer if you wish.
Mr. President, I'm voting against holding it because I'm prepared right now to vote against it, period. No amount of testimony, good or bad, is going to change my mind on this. Thank you.
With that said, if all have been heard, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to do the same as I did before. Counselors, Counselor Fleming? Counselor Fleming?
Yes, to hold.
Counselor Green?
Um, yes, to hold.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes, to hold.
And I know I have noes from Counselors DeNataly and Hughes. Any other in opposition? Counselor Boishman? All right, so that passes on a vote of 8 to 3. Next, we have a report from the Legislative Affairs Committee. Vice President Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Affairs Committee met April 13. There were several items on the agenda. 12820, Counselor Paul Boishman, to petition that the applications for a dealer's license must be for 10 cars minimum. That was given leave to withdraw as that was addressed in the zoning changes. Petition 2021, Vincent Poussetiere Esquire, to convert false alarm notification fees to a municipal charge leaned as outlined in the enclosed petition. That passed unanimously. 04621, Counselor Marcus DeNataly, to petition that the new Pittsburgh Hall Legislative Building be named the David Clark Legislative Building. That was held in committee. Petition 7021, Counselor Amy Green, in essence, it would name the broadcast booth at Crocker Field in Dave Clark's name. The city council has no authorization over that. That's a school committee matter, and so that was amended as a resolution expressing the city council's favor of that and referring that to the school committee for their determination. Petition 4421, an ordinance to strike Section 3-208 Deputy Procurement Officer, that was withdrawn prior to the meeting. And 17220, an ordinance amending the zoning bylaws. There were several, well, there were some minute changes, some inconsequential changes that dealt with, let's see, typos, some of the table fixes, and some off-street parking requirements on that table. There were some signage changes, and I'm not going to outline all of them here. They're all contained within the final report on zoning, and that is the substance of that report.
Mr. President?
Just a moment, Counselor. Because I know we have Tom Skrowski and possibly, it looks like Mary Jo Bohart, here on the zoning matter, I'm going to ask that we take that separately. That said, Counselor Boishman?
Mr. President, we will be holding all 46-21.
All right, we will take that separately as well. The remainder of the, sorry, the remainder of the report is now before the council.
Make a motion to accept? Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee and enact its recommendations, except as to 04621 and 17220. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. That said, we now have 04621 before the council.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion on that to give that. All 4621 leave to withdraw?
I'm going to ask that we first see if anyone has a motion on the recommendation of the committee. If no one does, or if that motion fails, then I will entertain that motion.
Move to accept the committee's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the committee to hold 04621. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman?
Counselor, the reason why I asked that this petition get leave to withdraw, I spoke at the committee meeting the last time, and I honestly feel that this is not a proper thing, to name this building after a particular counselor. There's many, many people in the city that serve just as dearly as he has, and that, to me, we're just singularly odd a person, with George Burke, Mary Whitney, Ellen G. Ronald, Herman Burke, Ron Injami, Joe Ward, Jerry Lombard, Heavy Bray, the list goes on and on and on. And if you really want to think about it, George Burke was not only Ward II councillor, he started the Civic Day parades, and we still have it to this day. We have the fireworks on July 4th started by George Burke, and he was a state legislator. So if we're going to name a building or anything after anybody, really, to be honest, I really feel that we're doing a great injustice to everybody. I really feel that we're doing a great injustice to everybody that served on the council, that has been leaders in politics. And all due respect, nothing against Mr. Clark, I like the guy too, but there were many, many people that just did a lot of good stuff too. So I'm not going to vote in favor of this petition at all.
Next, I have Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Counselor Searle. I spoke at the Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. I voted against holding this petition. I was in favor of this petition. I was in favor of Counselor DiNatali's petition. And he made a good point at the meeting that it's not about the service that all these people that Counselor Boishman has mentioned. You know, he mentioned Emil Gogan, George Burke, and the list was on and on. But Counselor DiNatali made the point that Counselor Clark had something to do with this building being built and putting this whole thing together, and that's why I was in favor of it. And just for your information, Counselor Boishman, former mayor and state rep George Burke already has a bridge named after him in your ward in Ward II, so he has been recognized. So I'm in favor of in having this building named after Dave Clark. Thank you.
Counselor Hughes?
I'm understanding that if anyone wants to put forth a petition to name any city property after someone, they can do that. That's their right to do that. So it's not necessarily a bad idea. If you wanted to put forth a petition to name the building after someone else, then you could have done that. However, Counselor DiNatali has done that, put forth the petition. So there's certainly nothing wrong with putting forth a petition and it's not discounting someone else's service. You know what I mean? It's not saying that they're not worthy, it's just that he put this petition forth, and no one else has put forth a petition at this time to rename, to rename this building. So I'm definitely in favor.
Counselor DiNatali?
Yeah, I realize that this petition, you know, if you don't vote for it, some people may think it's because you have something against David Clark, and I don't take it that way, as the petitioner. As Counselor Schultz said, and Counselor Hughes, you know, Counselor Hughes, I thank for his comments about, you know, there was a statement made that it's an injustice to these other people if we name this after a counselor who served the city for 18 years and many years, you know, everyone in the city knew who he was in terms of his broadcasting and whatnot. But I think that's a little hyperbolic to say it's an injustice. I said at the committee meeting that the question isn't why should he be named or be considered, but why not? What's the reason not to? And I think everyone agrees he's worthy of consideration. So that's why I said, let's just hold it, because I understood what the committee's position was in terms of researching this further and opening the door, because I know, I knew when I put this forward, it was going to open the floodgates. But in my testimony to the committee that Counselor Schultz pointed out, I asked myself, what distinguished him from the rest that were named? It's not that he was better than any of them, it was the imprint he had specifically to the creation of the facility that most of you are sitting in right now. Where he was a counselor when we evacuated City Hall, he was a counselor throughout the entire process of getting us back here, and having 700 as a complimentary building. And if it weren't for his vote, this project wouldn't have happened. And he was on record with his votes and his statements in public saying how he believed in downtown revitalization and how City Hall was a catalyst. So he had a specific legislative imprint and impact on this facility, which was why I thought maybe it was best to name it after him, because again, without his support, it wouldn't be there. Period. So that's what made me want to do this. But I don't fault anybody for being against it for the reasons stated. I just don't want it to be expressed that by not looking at other people, we are doing a disservice to them. That's why I tried to make this about Dave Clark and his imprint on the facility that we're sitting in now. That's what made me want to do this, was to honor his memory on a facility that if it were not for him, it wouldn't be there. And that's what set him apart from the other names mentioned, who are just as worthy of consideration for anything we named in the city. So that, the reason why I motioned to hold it is, I don't want to, I support the petition, obviously, it's my petition, like Counselor Schultz does and Counselor Hughes does, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to press the matter and say, no, I think the committee's wrong for holding it. I heard the committee's reasoning, and I respect their reasoning, and I, and I hope they eventually do support this, but I have no problem letting them take time on this. I don't take it as they're against it, and they made that very clear. So I'm okay with giving it more time, and that's why I did that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor DiNatali. I do appreciate the recognition that this is not, this is in no way a referendum on our opinions on Dave Clark, a man with whom many of us served and to all of us appreciate and honor. Counselor Squalia?
Thank you. I think that Counselor Boishman expressed it very well, and I agree with everything he has to say on this matter, except for that I don't feel that our legislative building for the city council should be named after any politician at all. I would prefer it to be a completely neutral name altogether. That is all. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion and second to hold this matter for further gathering of public input and data. All in favor? Any in opposition? Two in opposition? Motion passes nine to two. I'm sorry, just to confirm, all persons participating remotely, are there any in opposition there? Counselor Fleming?
I'm in opposition.
Oh, Counselor Schultz is in opposition. Okay. So in that case, the motion passes eight to three. Counselor Fleming? Counselor Fleming, go ahead.
We are voting to hold, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I was just confused by Counselor Schultz's vote.
Okay.
I'd like to have a vote on it today, that's all, Counselor Fleming.
Oh, okay, all right. That's what confused me. Sorry.
So are you in favor then, Counselor Fleming?
I'm, yeah, I have no problem holding this.
Okay. Next, we have 17220, the zoning updates, and I believe we have Tom Skrowski here to speak to this matter. I believe he had a few additional clerical updates that he wanted to introduce. Mr. Skrowski, you can participate whenever you're ready.
Good evening, councilors. Can you all hear me okay?
We got you.
Thank you. So I will try to be brief today. Most of what we needed to discuss, we talked about at Legislative Affairs last week. Just a few quick changes that I did want to note that were in response to the Legislative Affairs comments. They're not changes of substance, really, just form. And I marked them off here in the comments. So in the Legislative Affairs meeting, folks had questioned why in the use table there's asterisks next to the wireless communication facilities. In short, it's complicated. And so what I just added here was a clarification that says, if anyone's looking to build a wireless communication facility, best not to look at the use table, but to go to 181.62, which is that section of the ordinance. And that was in response to one of the questions that we had had. Another, Counselor Van Hazenga had noted that we have medical treatment center facility or clinic in the use table, but it wasn't in the parking table, and it wasn't defined. So I added it to the parking table here, and just used the same parking requirements for medical offices. It's just a type of medical office. And I'll get to the definition later on. Then we had talked about signage. This was the Legislative Affairs verbatim request for 1815352, which was regarding bulletin boards and announcement signage. And I'm sorry, I'm just jumping through, and obviously, I can't read the room. I think I can see some of you if I squint hard enough, but all the councilors in the legislative building, I can't tell if you have questions, so feel free to jump in. Temporary off-premise signs, it was just requested to be moved from the signs not requiring a permit section, because it does require a permit. I moved it accordingly and with Attorney Poussetiere's direction. And then lastly, I added a definition for medical treatment center facility or clinic. This just was missed, frankly, but this follows sort of the spirit of what the council had agreed to when they added it to the use table. I think we had had, in one of the initial Legislative Affairs meetings where we were building this out, we had somebody from a medical treatment center speaking during the public comment portion, and I'd sort of defined it as we see here. And I heard no objection from the council. So the, this is my understanding of what the council was voting on, and it's a facility that provides outpatient treatment, whose primary use is the onsite dispensing of medication as a form of treatment. So it's a place that you go, the primary purpose is going to receive onsite medication for treatment purposes.
Mr. Skrowski?
Yes.
Briefly, before we move on from that, I would suggest that perhaps we change the word "is" to the word "includes," because we don't want to give the impression that we're essentially defining a pharmacy. You know, it's a place that can dispense medication, but you may also receive treatment that does not necessarily include medication, depending on what the doctor on site or physician on site has to say about it.
And that is it. So all the other changes that I'd sent to the council today, I could probably keep reviewing and revising this until it's absolutely perfect. You know, I fixed some numbering issues that weren't even part of what we were doing with the reform effort, but, you know, some of these things had a domino effect, basically. So I changed some numbering, fixed a few more typos, and all that was what I'd sent to the council this afternoon. But none of those were changes of substance. The only changes of substance since you all last saw this were outlined, and I just presented to the council. So happy to take any questions here, if there are any.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So in this last one, for the treatment, whose primary, for the medical treatment center, what areas would that be allowed in?
So to take it back to the use table.
The use, yeah.
So this was the one thing that was voted on by the council. And the vote was to, I'm pulling it up as we're speaking here, I've got my screen frozen. But essentially, it was allowed in commercial districts and industrial, or in the commercial district by special permit from the Board of Appeals. In the industrial district, by special permit from the Board of Appeals. And in the medical services district, by special permit from the Board of Appeals. It would be prohibited in all other districts.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? I'm sorry, just one moment. Counselor Green, were you trying to ask a question?
Well, I was, and then I saw the line above it where the distinction between a medical office and a medical treatment center. So I, it's for my own benefit, I guess, in understanding that I'm not, that I would either be grandfathered with the facility that I own up on Walton Street and not be excluded from doing the work that I'm doing there, because we are deemed by the state of Massachusetts as a medical treatment facility. That's what allowed us to stay open during COVID. So it's a selfish, I guess, request or clarification on definition.
So Counselor, two points that you raised there. One is simply that the definition in the zoning of what constitutes a medical treatment facility would control for the purposes of zoning. So you can be a medical treatment facility for state purposes, and not necessarily a medical treatment facility for zoning purposes. That shouldn't mess you up in any way. And secondly, yes, any pre-existing use would be automatically grandfathered, as long as that use continues. So no, there is no intention to shut down your or any other pre-existing business in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you for that.
Very valid concern. Any other questions? In that case, I'm going to ask that we first take a vote on accepting the committee's recommendations, which included some amendments. Then we'll vote on Mr. Skrowski's additional clerical amendments, and then we will vote to go to do the third and final reading. I have a motion and second to accept the committee's recommendations and noted amendments. All in favor? I'm going to do a roll call of the remotes. Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor DiNatali, you should have been at the top of the alphabet there. Did we lose Counselor DiNatali? I will come back to him. And Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Any in opposition? Seeing none, and I don't see Counselor DiNatali back, we'll say that passes 10 to 0 then.
Accept that, Tom Skrowski.
All right, I have a motion and second. We'll just do this by unanimous consent. If there's no objection, any objections? Seeing none. And again, I'll remind you, since we're doing screen share, if any of the remotes do have objections, just shout them out, because I can't see you all on the screen at once. But seeing no objections, those further amendments pass. And now the ordinance is before us for its third and final reading.
Move to send it to its third and final reading.
I have a motion and second to send the ordinance to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking on the motion. Since this is an ordinance, I will do it by a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ordinance is passed, 10 to 0.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The applause is for you, Tom.
Thank you all. I signed off too soon. I appreciate it. I appreciate everyone's efforts throughout. It's been a journey.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much. This has been quite the journey, and I think it is going to benefit the city immensely for decades to come.
I certainly hope so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, we have orders finance. Unless anyone requests it, I am not going to read them all off, because there are many. But they are all 07521 through 08221, all referred to the Finance Committee. Thank you, it doesn't actually require a motion, but again, I very much appreciate the support. That actually concludes our agenda for today. That actually concludes our agenda for the evening. I have a motion and second to adjourn. I'm sorry. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boeschman? Go ahead.
I just want to make an announcement that Ward 2A and 2B, they're going to be cleaning the streets this week and next week, and we're asking again to clean your sidewalks so they can pick up the sand. I want to say thank you very much. And I also want to say to the guys at the cemetery, Forest Hill Cemetery, they're doing a marvelous job picking up the trash around on Electric Ave and Mount Ian Road and Roadstone, and going across the street and keeping the cemetery clean. I think it's outstanding. I kind of felt bad for them the other day. They just went by me, and I took my second lap around, and all of a sudden, there's a coffee cup right on the sidewalk where they picked up the trash five minutes earlier. So I figure I point that out, I want to say thank you to the citizen that did that. They're great. But other than that, I want to give credit to them. They're doing a marvelous job, and I wanted them to know that. Thank you very much.
Yes, Counselor Van Hazinga?
We'd also like to announce that Wards 4 and 5 are having their neighborhood cleanups this Saturday, meeting at 8:00 AM at the parking lot at High and Pleasant Street, and we hope all the residents come out and help beautify our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Kuchar?
I would also like to note that Ward 3 will be having their ward cleanup on May 8th, and, oh, and Ward 2 as well. So I hope to find many people who want to come out and volunteer to help clean up.
All right. And now, if there are no further announcements, I believe I still have a motion and second to adjourn. If there is no objection, we will do this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.